I do too.
We rise from the invitation by Reverend Whit Malone, Pastor First Presbyterian Church, one of my favorite pastors.
Thank you. Let's pray. Oh God, we come before you this night with heavy hearts for our sisters and brothers in Boston. And so tonight, we begin by praying for them. We pray for the victims, their families, and their loved ones, that you will give them peace. We pray for those who were injured, that you will heal their bodies and their spirits. We pray for those who witnessed this unspeakable violence, that you will heal their memories. We pray for public officials and first responders and those who are working to find the perpetrators, that you will grant them strength, patience, and finally, success. And we pray for all those who are seeking to help in countless ways, that you will use them for good. Even as you are at work in Boston, God, we ask you to be at work here in our city. Be with this body as they do our common business. Grant them all that they need for the task you have called into, and bless them, oh God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First, I want to recognize our librarian, Louise Humphries, who has a special guest she would like to introduce.
I do. This is Carol Dennis. She is the children's librarian at Ridgeview branch. She's been here, I think, just over a month.
And Alan Jackson, Chairman of our Business Development Committee Committee, will have a special recognition.
I'm the City Councilman, right? Mr. Berry, so good to see you all again. I've had a long day, but I kept looking forward to the fact that my day was going to end and getting to make a presentation like this, because this is where things get really fun, where we as the Business Development Committee have been working towards trying to make sure we're recognizing those businesses in Hickory that have been here for not only just a long time, but really called Hickory home over that time period as well. And tonight is absolutely no exception. I've had the real privilege of getting to learn a little more about this company in the last several weeks, and hopefully if people have gotten to read a little about it on the website, Hickory's put up some great articles as well. But it's part of what the Business Development Committee's been doing is recognizing with our Business Well Crafted Award, those businesses that have really put in a long time here in Hickory and keep growing and moving and keep Hickory what it is from a business community standpoint. The company tonight is Catawba Paper Box. And I'm going to read a little bit. I hate to read from a script here, but there's a lot of details I want to make sure we cover because I think it's fascinating the story of this company, what they're doing here in our area. Catawba Paper Box is one of Hickory North Carolina's longest-lasting businesses. Its current location since 1939, this business has been here in Hickory. Catawba Paper Box has supported the area's hosiery and furniture industries for decades. Started by A.J. Pressler, the company has been owned and operated by Skipper Smith and his wife, Phan, for the last 21 years here in Hickory. Over the last two decades, the company has expanded its services, added many national clients, and with sales increasing each year and profitability on the rise, the company is creating the future with arms wide open. Company creates rigid boxes that are custom-created for clients both local and nationally. The customer can create the designs himself or work with the design team at Catawba Paper Box. And these boxes, with their extreme high quality and value, add value to the products that are contained inside of them. Rigid boxes are quite sturdy and with hard sides that don't collapse totally flat. When paired with different printing techniques, the results can be quite stunning. This company's been an American company. Every employee of the company is based in Hickory, North Carolina, hires employees of every age and race and age. And in the company's early days, it primarily manufactured packaging for the city's hosiery industry. But over time, it's really grown and expanded in some other industries as well. Some of their current clients, Neiman Marcus and Nordstrom, Old Smokey Candy Kitchen among others, they've got a lot of work in medical companies, chocolate manufacturers, stationary businesses, a lot of different variety. But they still, every single week, cut 50 tons of materials for the furniture industry right here in Hickory. So this is the kind of company we want to recognize. This is the kind of company we want to say is what makes Hickory great from a business community standpoint. Since 1939, that's just a great testament to their perseverance and deciding to call Hickory home. We're really glad to have them here and really honored to give them this award, a Business Well Crafted Award. If I could ask Skipper and Phan Smith to come up and join us, they'd be gracious enough to come join us today to receive this award.
Thank you. I've been at the box shop an extraordinary 38 years. I'm so envious of the young lady back there. It's been here in Hickory two weeks. My business has been very fortunate, just in the sense that we've been lucky and also that we're here for Hickory. Hickory's an exceptional place, a special place. So grateful for all you guys being behind that desk and looking to the future. We thank you a lot.
Thank you so much.
Did I have to come up and tell us to take a picture? How do we normally do this? Take a picture? You guys are all the way around.
Sure.
We're just going to have them standing in the back there or something. No photobomb.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I've worked with both of them for many years, and they are an exceptional company, very responsive, so I know why they've been around.
Well, I was sitting here thinking about all of the young people who have gotten college educations, thanks to how you all at that company. And I know, like most small business owners, your employees and their families become family, and that's one of the things that makes this country great. And it may be business, but it also gets very personal. Mr. Jackson's son was an honorable mention, was recognized, I don't know what the name is today, was recognized for honorable mention in our library bookmark contest. And I want to read Mr. Jackson's son. What's your son's name?
Alexander.
Alexander Jackson was an honorable mention. And these bookmarks are just really, are really cute. And when you look at the ages of the kids who did them, there's a lot of talent and a lot of coloring in the lines, and it's wonderful. It really is wonderful. Are these the three winners in no particular order?
By grade library.
By grade, okay. The grade three to five winner, who did a tree, I guess a Tree of Knowledge. I'm getting pretty far out on the limb here, but I think the Tree of Knowledge, this is done by Adele Hansen, Hickory Day School, grades three to five. Grade six to eight, pretty deep, but it's great artwork and definition of library, Discover Life at Your Library. Taylor Crooks, Jacobs Fork Middle School. And grades K-2, and I am just amazed by this, grades K-2, Discover Life at Your Library, Dream, Think, Explore.
Well, that's just a testament to starting children at an early age, Hickory, too.
And that is Babe Stetser, Hickory Christian Academy.
Bookmark well crafted.
That has a ring to it, doesn't it? Okay. If you'd like to have a bookmark, they can pick these up at the Children's Library at Ridgeview, right? Or any Hickory library station, right? They are, they truly are. I'm sure there's some very proud parents there. Motion to approve, oh, excuse me. Do we have any persons requesting to be heard? Oh, there is a sign of she, oh, okay. I would like to go over the protocol again. We ask people to limit their comments to three minutes. We call time at three minutes, and then again, at six minutes and nine minutes sometimes. We want everyone to have their say, and so we're not going to embarrass anyone, or we're not going to cut you off before you're finished having your say. We ask no cheers, no jeers, and that everybody be respectful of everyone in this room. With that, Mr. Cliff Moon is asked to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cliff Moon, 2125 Eighth Street Court Northeast, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crum. Thank you for the opportunity. Two weeks ago, when I stood up here and spoke on the videotaping idea for the City Council, I left out one important piece that I wanted to mention, and for the record and for our minutes, and that is that, as you all are well aware, we here in this council chamber are already being recorded, and you're being recorded at present time, and these are placed on YouTube. I do hope that as you look at, and I know that talking to Mr. Berry, you're into the budget process, I hope you will continue to look at that as an opportunity to expand the knowledge of what goes on with this council, and again, referring to the remarks that were made by another member of the citizenry last time about how this expands people's interest in council. And lastly, on another topic, I would like to ask you to please consider giving public access to the bathrooms in this building on Saturday this week, on the 20th, from 11:00 to 2:00 P.M. as there is a commemorative event occurring, a march from Ridgeview up to City Hall, doesn't have anything to do with the city per se, it has to do with a commemorative event of Bloody Sunday at the Edmund Pettus Bridge, and there will be people speaking, and there will be people gathering for that, and to have public access to a bathroom would be very nice. Thank you very much.
Angela Hurd, City of Refuge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to all the City Council members. I'm Angela Hurd with the City of Refuge Community Development Center. I'm the youth coordinator, and we've really benefited from the community block rent money, and so I'm here today to ask you to continue it and to also give you some of the accomplishments of some of our children. We do meet at Ridgeview with the Parks and Recreation seniors to this building, so we're very grateful for that and partnership with that as well. We have about 20 children this school session, and had some really good things to happen. Our children last year won about 26 Academic and Perfect Attendance Awards, very pleased about that. One of our children, one of my, one of the children of the after school was in Battle of the Books. That's a competition that the elementary schools have, and she was on the team that came in second place, and we were very proud of that. Really seeing some great accomplishments, really seeing some measured results from our children. We have an English as a second language child. He was making Ds and Fs, now he's making, he's on the A B honor roll, and he's consistently on the A B honor roll, so we're proud of that. One of our children won Ridgeview's summer program contest last year as well, so we're very proud of that. So we're trying to make a difference with the children. We appreciate the partnerships. Lenora Ryan has helped us as well. Their Circle K Club has come to help us as well. So it takes those partnerships for our children to be successful. We will be tracking our children. We've helped over 250 children with our programs, so we're very pleased with that as well. So I'm very grateful for that. I think Mr. Seaver was my teacher in high school. He taught me algebra. If he remembers, he taught me algebra, and that was one of the courses I needed before I went to Lenora Ryan. So I'm not trying to date Mr. Seaver, but I appreciate him. I appreciate his support, and you know, it does, we've got to pay it forward, we've got to, you know, get someone, you know, behind and help push them as well. So we're trying to work and make a difference. It is a job, because not only do we help with academics, but we have to help with other areas as well, and we're kind of like the first line of defense. So we appreciate the support that we've gotten in the past with the community block rent money. We were hoping that you continue to support us as well.
Angela, I remember you being a very good student. Just went to one of those meetings, we just saw a slideshow about the Lenora Ryan University Circle K, and a lot of it was on the City of Refuge.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Great-looking kids, a lot of good things going on.
That's good.
Pictures is proof in the pudding.
That's good, that's good. Well, I'm glad you said I was a good student, because I needed that class, it was required to go to Lenora Ryan, but wasn't required at that time at the degree, so Mr. Seaver helped me get into college, so I appreciate that. I do. But the university, Lenora Ryan University's been very helpful, and they consistently send volunteers. You know how some people say they'll help, and then they kind of drop by the wayside, but they've consistently been there, and I think that's what's made a difference for our children, so I appreciate them.
Steve Ivester, 91014 Avenue, Hickory Northwest, Mr. Mayor, councillors, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crum. I'm actually here to endorse something, and that is your consent agenda A item. I think it would be unfortunate, it has to do with cleaning up council of government. And from what I've seen, and I've been around this region, I think that Western Peamark Council of Government does a fine job, that High Country Council of Government does a fine job, and that Isothermal Council of Government does a fine job. And I think that your, that the proposal B, that combines those three councils of governments together, is a good proposal, and a proposal under legislation that splits them up and breaks them up is a bad proposal. Now, I think that Plan B is better than Plan A, and I'd like to go off a little bit here on economic development. I've watched Advantage West and the Triad Regional Partnership and Charlotte Regional Partnership, and I think you said, heard me say before, that I think that we get a raw deal, because I think Charlotte Regional Partnership is just an extension of the Charlotte Chamber of Commerce and the Central Council of Governments, and I think we would be better separated from them. I hear two models in metaphors used. One is Hickory as Charlotte's northwest territory, and the other is Hickory as a bridge between Charlotte and Asheville. I like the latter metaphor better. And the proposal B, which puts Isothermal Council of Governments, Western Peamark Council of Governments, and High Country Council of Governments together, is a band across the state from north to south that clearly separates the Charlotte region from the Asheville region. I think it would serve us well. Now, to go to the next part of it, we don't know what the legislature's going to do. They're questioning whether they're going to continue the seven regional partnerships. So Charlotte Regional Partnership may become non-existent, or it may be realigned with these, with these regions that we're talking about. I think it would behoove Hickory to think in terms of being the focus of that region under your Plan B. There's some fantastic counties and cities in that region. I was, I was down in Charlotte this summer, and I stopped into the Charlotte Regional Partnership, and I said, you know, I'm really interested in clusters, in clusters of things like furniture, or textiles, or precision plastics, or advanced composites, clusters we have. We used to have a major cluster in electro manufacturing, largest electro manufacturing cluster in the southeast, somewhat around GE, Distribution Transporter. Not just GE, but all the little suppliers and plants and spinoffs, that's a cluster. Well, this fellow looked at me and he said, well, you know, Hickory may get to be a node in some of our clusters. Well, I don't think we want to be a node in anybody's cluster. I think we want to have our own clusters based on our own creativity, because that's what gives us regional distinction, and jobs that pay more, and jobs that can't be taken away, and jobs that don't have to be bought with tax incentives. So I think that this Plan B, with us combining Western Peamark Council of Governments, High Country Hosts, which I think we have a natural synergy with, because we're the gateway to the Blue Ridge, and I think we have a natural affinity with Isothermal, because a lot of the people from Hickory came up from those cotton growing areas of Cleveland and Rutherford Counties. May I speak a little longer? I think we should think in terms of Hickory being the focus of a regional partnership that combines those three councils of government. It's a fine group. The Isothermal is Pope, McDowell, Rutherford, and Cleveland Counties. High Country Hosts is Alleghany, Ash, Wilkes, Watoga, Avery, Mitchell, Yancey, and of course, you know the four Unifor Counties. You know, I think Hickory could be the focus of a regional partnership that would serve us and serve those counties better than what they're presently being served, and I think we should think that way. Now, one part of that is, is I think we have to avoid the mistake that Charlotte's made. In my mind, Charlotte is both economically and culturally imperialist. They took Grokovia, they took Piedmont, they took Lowe's, they took NASCAR. All they do is just take our, take our young people, take our ideas, and send us back trade goods. I think we'd be better free of them. So I would urge us to think in terms of working with those three councils of governments to create a new regional partnership, and if Hickory is generous and reaches out and is a focus and a support for those towns and counties in those three councils of governments, I think we can do a better job than Charlotte, not make the mistake that Charlotte has made of eating up its children. And I urge us to think more recently, I urge us to think in terms of a new, a new regional partnership structure with Hickory maybe being the hub of that, and it gives us a university in that, in that group also, and that Appalachian is there. And we love to see Appalachians' engineering champions be here in Hickory. That's about what I have to say. I endorse the staff report on this. I think that Plan B is the best plan, and I hope it can come to be something more than just what it appears to be right now. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the match?
I approve.
Second. I always think that please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion is carried. It's unanimous, all members are present. It was made by Mr. Seaver and seconded by Ms. Patton. Mr. Pope, I also apologize, I should have asked, does anyone else want to be heard?
I had signed up, a mayor on the back page, because I wanted to be last.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is that the only person signed up on that page? Mr. Pope?
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Attorney Crum, thank you for giving me an opportunity to be heard. I have two concerns that I would like to address this evening. The first concern is the usage of the city facilities that actually belong to the citizens of the city. I am a citizen, have been all of my life. I live at 225 Fourth Street Place Southwest, which is a half-block from the police department, pass that department every day on personal business. Back a couple of years ago, when the swimming pools were demolished, I received a phone call from a business owner in northwest Hickory that told me about what they knew had happened to equipment that was removed from the community, both at Ridgeview and Abby Weaver's swimming pools. I know that the city took action on that. I know that there were folk who lost jobs over that incident. But the thing that I will say, because I was protected by the Chief of Police, which I have a lot of respect for, because he was concerned about repercussions if folk found out that I went to the Savvy Joy, did some questioning, found that they could not give me the information, but they would have to give it to the police department, and the police department went down and did a thorough investigation. I appreciate what the chief did, what he had his officers to do, but I know that at our last City Council meeting, there was a recommendation made for a citizens review board, made up of citizens and perhaps others from the police department or from staff. I will say, just this week, I got two phone calls from citizens that was complaining about problems that they were having with two officers that responded to a call to their residents. I would say, and I said to them, you need to have those individuals to write out statements in detail about what occurred, what happened. In my opinion, it needs to be looked at. So I will say that, to me, it goes back to some training
Three minutes.
...as a former police officer that I had, and I even helped to train one of the current City Council members when they were in communications of the police department, but later became a lieutenant with the city's police department. I hope that you will consider establishing a review board so that no one will ever be able to come before you and say that my concerns were not looked into and resolved. The other concern that I have is about the restrooms that were asked to be used on this coming Saturday. This building was used by another group for church services, for Sunday school, when there was problems with their church. The restrooms were open, City Council chambers were open. Why are we being, and when I say we, other citizens in the community, is being treated differently when making acceptable requests? I even told Attorney Dula, when I made the request, that we would post someone out in the foyer, the doors to City Hall lobby and the doors to City Council chambers can be locked, but people should have a right to go to the restroom. These are public restrooms within this building, owned by citizens like myself, who are public citizens, community members who pay taxes. Without our taxes, this building, like other facilities, would have never been built off our tax dollars. I was told that the restrooms on Union Square would be open for the farmer's market and for the beer festival that's going on on this coming Saturday, and that we can walk to Union Square and use the restrooms. I said to Attorney Dula, and I will say it to you, because I am not ashamed of, when those restrooms were locked, and I needed to go to those restrooms one day, right after I had surgery for prostate cancer, which I'm not ashamed of, I'm proud that the doctors brought me through it, I'm doing well, that I needed to go. So instead of going to those restrooms because they were locked, I would tell you, and I said, arrest me if you want to arrest me, because there's one thing I'm not afraid of, and that's going to jail. I went behind the old Colony Casual Building and found a bush, and used that bush, knowing that I could have been arrested if I had been caught. It was something that I had to do because there was no other place to go. City Hall was closed, the transit center hadn't been built yet and completed, so I had no other choice, because the merchants put up signs in their windows that their restrooms were not public restrooms, unless you were spending money buying something or shopping. And if you remember, we had a City Council member who was shopping in one of those businesses, but was told that she could not use her restroom, and that person is no longer a City Council member, so you know who I'm talking about. Ladies and gentlemen, please. Bill, the right- Ladies and gentlemen, please, do the right thing and stop treating one group of folk in this city one way and treating a different group of folk a different way. Treat us all equal. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the match? Do we have a motion to reaffirm the matter filed on second reading?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. DeSantis, seconded by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's your end. Consider agenda, anything to come off of these considered agenda?
Please be approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Whitelaw. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is adjourned.
Information Adams, one for City Council, has reported their rights for all the town all day in Raleigh, March 26th and 27th.
Let me, I'd like to point out on that, that there's also someone else, did you submit a fifth report, Mr. DeSantis? I, Town Hall.
No, I didn't.
Did somebody else submit a fifth report to Town Hall? I thought we had another, what, we use the C V N?
Yep.
Okay, I wanted to point out that others went to Town Hall there, but I, my first appointment that morning was at 8:30, and then I also had to say for the, for the meeting of the leadership's panel. Thank you.
First item of new business for the council this evening is a public hearing. And prior to opening the public hearing, I'd asked the city's planning directors, Brian Fraser, to come to the podium and to present to the City Council the proposed 2013 Community Development Block Plan, which is an excellent plan.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. Mr. Leonetti sent his apologies for not being here. He would normally say that, he would normally come before you tonight with the 2013, 2014 proposed budget, but he and Mr. Meyer are at the National American Planning Association Conference in, in Chicago, I don't know where they are, probably Great Weefield or something. If you're stuck with me. The, the city is expected in this next year to receive approximately $272,574 in 2013 through its CDVG entitlement allocation. The city's also expected to receive approximately $160,400 in program income, making the total budget $432,974. That's about a 10% reduction from last year, 2012, 13, where we received $303,000. I'll, I'll briefly go through what the, what the proposed funding is for. The first item is our, our annual housing rehab purchase program, that's $40,909. A loan to Habitat for Humanity at $60,000, that will help finance housing rehab interest-free loan, which is standard from year to year. Public infrastructure improvements, $20,000. Down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers, $20,000. Ms. Hertz spoke of the City of Refuge After School Program, $3,265. The Interfaith Housing Development Corporation, $20,000 for the library, Grigly Library Rehab and Down Payment Assistance Program. Cooperative Christian Industries, $6,400, that's the purchase of prescriptions for low, moderate income individuals, that's CCM Services. Alpha, that is $6,400 also, that will help fund a caseworker position. Safe Harbor, which is new this year, that is $6,400. That takes, that's a day shelter program at the former St. Paul's Lutheran Church, which is now run by the Rehoboth Church Ministries, $6,400 for the Hickory Soup Kitchen, that helps fund for their, fund their program administrator. Exodus Homes, $6,400, that helps fund their transportation coordinator here in Hickory. And then $40,000 for administration of the program, that helps fund portions of two staff positions in the CDVG program, as well as $800 for our annual fair housing program, and that's the grand total of $432,974. And again, the budget highlights, as I said a moment ago, this represents a 10% reduction in funding related to estimates received to date from, from HUD. Budget highlights also, we're looking at in the coming year, the, working with Mr. McLeod in the construction of picnic shelter and bathrooms at Kiwanis Park, the continuation of our successful housing rehabilitation program, and the, and the support for six local nonprofit organizations. And I would be more than happy to try to answer any questions that you may have about this presentation this evening than the proposed budget.
I said one about your last slide, it said total at the bottom.
Had total on page? Mm-hmm.
I don't think those numbers add up before it, period, that's why.
Looks like something missed. I'm not sure. I'll take a look at that, but that is the grand total of the money that I'm getting. I think it had-
There's a $196,000.
I think it was program income.
I thought it was something different.
It's the kitchen, um, for their-
That would make the difference.
Right, right, that's right. For their, for their own.
Still teaching math.
I can do very, I can do as well in algebra.
Danny is still keeping us straight in math.
Yeah, that's why I'm planning, not in math.
I'm teaching English now, so.
That's scary.
Any other question? Thank you.
This is the same amount of money that we gave, we gave in City of Refuge, Mr. Patton.
Please don't be a question.
Mr. Fraser, is that City of Refuge funds what was requested? The $3,600?
Yes, sir.
Motion or dissection?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing here, and as is our custom, the people who would like to speak against the proposal are given the opportunity to speak first, and then the people who like to support the proposal are given an opportunity to speak, and we have opportunities to rebut. We ask that each side limit their comments to 15, distribute it as needed among the various people speaking to the other sides. Please, no cheering, no cheering, please be respectful. With that, I declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak against this proposal.
One, one clarification. What was the $200,000? I mean, certain amount of money coming from the federal government, and a certain amount of money came in from the programs of just $200,000, and I, I didn't, maybe you understood what that $200,000 went to, but, but I didn't. I mean, that was once it came to the city, and it wasn't determined where they went to.
After the closing of the hearing, listen to the questions.
All right, we'll address it after the closing of the hearing.
Well, the $200,000 missing, so I'm concerned about.
We're going to address it.
Mayor, thank you. I am concerned about what is being recommended with the same certain groups in this city continuing to get money year after year after year after year. Exodus Homes, I spoke against it last year, I'm speaking against it this year. They have gotten money from day one, and I know that if this money is being used to pay a transportation coordinator, then they should raise their own funds to pay salaries in a nonprofit organization. They continue to get money, and I was told last year that y'all were going to look at giving money to other nonprofit organizations that is either doing similar work, the same work, or who needs a hand up. I am totally against money being given to the same few groups every year, year after year after year after year. It's like a baby. When you first give birth to a baby, they eat or drink milk, then they move to baby food, and then they move to solid adult food as the years pass. When are we going to stop getting money? I would rather us give that $6,000 to the children's program in the community or to the library, or programs for children through the libraries, instead of continue to give group, to money to groups who should be able to support their own. So I am against that $6,000 and some dollars going to Exodus Homes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against this proposal? Is there anyone who'd like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and ask for motion or discussion.
I, I would like to clarify, the screen, the screenshot that Brian showed didn't include Kiwanis Shelter and Bathroom, which that's the $200,000.
Yeah, if you look on page 60 of your agenda, for whatever reason, mark them, pull that slide back up. Kiwanis Park Shelter and Bathroom, which is $196,000, we just stopped listing the nine lives there for the total of $400,000. Put a little down a couple of slides. If you go back a slide, it's listed on that slide right there. So that's what, that was the discrepancy, that was charged, that was the issue that was left off, that it is, it is implied recommendation.
So, and, and for clarifications, the, the total budget is the sum of the money from the federal housing, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which was by children serving in 2000, plus the program income expenses, recurring lines and programs.
And those bathrooms there, they're desperately needed, I was over there Saturday, and I counted, hurt about 200, 40 kids, parents over there, and a few that are talking about the restroom, which is far away, especially if it's for kids with disabilities, that is a long drag, so.
I know most of the, all the parks are turning away because of the parks in replacement that I had, went down to, but Governor, excuse me, Hill this past weekend, and they literally had people driving in, turning around, leaving, so I certainly understand the need for the bathrooms over the long term.
I approve, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
I, 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 it's further discussion, I would like to point out that we, we do, as required by law, we advertise this budget. I think I saw it in the paper today, is it? It's been advertised, huh?
Well, there's actually a pretty extensive process that you go through with this, that's mandated by the federal government. Your Community Relations Council actually receives those budget requests from organizations in the community, there's different categories that by law you got to look at, and then they work with staff to basically give you this recognition, and I saw this in the process that lasts a couple of months. They have their own public hearings, it's advertised, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, now you've had a public hearing, so it's a pretty extensive process.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is your end.
Next item of new business is the Department of Labor, they'll ask the city's Chief Financial Officer, Assistant City Manager Warren Wood to come to the podium and present the third quarter report to the City Council.
All right, members of City Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, we have completed three quarters of the current fiscal year, nine months, so it's a good time to look and see how we're doing so far this fiscal year. And what we'll do is start with the, with the two funds, the general fund and the water and sewer fund. The general fund is a $43 million fund, makes up about half the city's overall budget. The water and sewer fund is about a $20 million fund, makes up about 25% of the city's overall budget. So, 75% of the year complete, the general fund has received about 79% of its budgeted revenues. The five-year average says we should be at 81%, so we're running slightly behind there with three months left. On the expenditure side, so far we have spent or encumbered about 73% of our budget expenditures, and the five-year average says we should be at about 7.5%. So we're running ahead there. So the bottom line effect of that, when you look at revenues and expenditures taking out encumbrances, we have received about $4.3 million more than we have spent so far in the general fund. Our five-year average says we'll be at 6.3 to compute, so to speak. And the good news is that the difference was greater the last quarter, so we're making up some ground. So we'll see how the fiscal year ends, I'll look back to see a comparable year of where we stood in the third quarter, and 2009 was a very comparable year, and we ended up putting money, a little bit of money in fund balance that year, and so just because of that far off the five-year average doesn't mean that we're not going to end the year in black. So, you know, we'll continue to keep an eye on all that. And our struggle all along has been in the general fund. Moving to the water and sewer fund, with 75% of the year complete, story's a little bit different here. On the revenue side, we've received about 70.6% of our budgeted revenues, the five-year average says we'll be at 68.4%, so we're doing better on the revenue side compared to what our five-year average, or five-year trend says we should be doing. On the expenditure side, we have spent or encumbered 66% of our budgeted expenditures, the five-year average says we should be at about 62.7%, so we're running ahead of that. However, when you take the, the encumbrances out and just look at strictly revenues over expenditures, we have collected $2.5 million more than we have spent in the water and sewer fund for the three quarters. The five-year average says we'll be at $1.68 million, which is, so we're doing about $800,000 better than what our five-year average says. So that's, the water and sewer fund has held up well during the, say that every time because it has, and that continues to be the case. So, we're doing okay in the water and sewer fund, still struggling somewhat in the general fund. Any questions so far? When, when members of City Council and a group of citizens went to Raleigh, the mayor called me and said, let's look at, we're going to make our case for the 1% prepared meals tax, let's look at a number of different things. One of the things that he, very interesting that he asked me to prepare was, what's been the cumulative effect of, of revenue laws during the Great Recession to the city of Hickory? So this, this slide captures that. What you got here, property tax, these are, these bars are negative, you're, you're used to seeing these bars as positive, these bars are actually, are negative. So, what you're seeing here with property tax, in 2009, we had our peak year in property tax revenue. To your, since then, we have declined. So the cumulative effect from our peak year is $762,000 loss from our peak year, last, last two years. Does that make sense? Taking that same approach, looking at sales tax, our peak year in sales tax in terms of revenue was 2007, 2008. Interesting, 2007, 2008 was the year that the recession began, and the impact of sales tax was almost immediate. That wasn't the case, and never has been the case since I've been here, with property tax, that the impact of, of the economy is a lot slower, has a lot slower impact on your property tax. So the impact on sales tax was almost immediate, with our peak year being in '07, '08, and then bottom fell out a few years after that. And the cumulative effect, comparing that peak year, the cumulative numbers following that from the peak was $3.7 million off the peak. Does that make sense? So the, the total combined, and we're just looking at property tax and sales tax, is about $4.5 million. about $4.5 million. Mr. Webb says, Mr. Webb says, flat is the new way. Well, a good way of looking at this, if, if we had remained flat, if the recession had no impact on our revenues, and recessions obviously do have impact on your revenues, we would have been $4.5 million better off than where we are. Does that make sense? So that's an interesting, oftentimes we look at year-to-year comparisons, but this is a cumulative comparison. So don't get away with that.
Property tax, that collection or value?
That is collection. That is actually property tax revenue.
Because of collection rate or decline in property assessed value?
Mostly decline in value, somewhat the collection rate has dropped as well. So there's a kind of, we won't spend a whole lot of time on that yet, it's been, we all know that, and that's, there's. And interestingly, you know, this just captures property tax and sales tax. Probably percentage-wise, the most hardest-hit revenue that we've had is investment earnings. In 2007, 2008, the general fund earned $1 million in investment earnings. Last year, we earned $200,000, just over $200,000. So, the, the impact on, we all know what happened to the interest rates, the impact was almost immediate on our investment earnings as well, and that's not...
Similar base?
Yes, yeah. So, you know, that's, that's just something to think about. Now, we're moving into, after all that negative, we're going to talk about a couple of positive things. Moving into budget development for the FY '13, '14 City Managers' recommended budget. Some positive things that we're seeing so far, it looks like at this point, good news, we will, we will narrowly avoid our third consecutive year of property tax-based decline. And the reason that is, you know, I talk a lot about real property values permitting, and those continue to be low numbers. What is pulling our number up are the values of public utilities, Duke Power, Piedmont Natural Gas, as well as real property values. Does that make sense? So the, the actual increase we should see in our property tax base this year is about a half a percent. So we will avoid this third consecutive year of a tax-based decline, mostly attributable to the increase in value in Duke Power values, as well as Piedmont Natural Gas and toll phone values, and business personal property. Other good news, most of our other revenues are stable. We've seen a little bit of growth in sales tax, not much, but we're not having to budget declining revenue. We're budgeting maybe incrementally increasing revenue in some places. So that's, that's a positive compared to what we had been dealing with the last few years. One of the things you're going to see in this coming year's budget is multiple opportunities for financial partnerships. We are, we have at least a half a dozen opportunities to partner with either individuals or organizations in the community to improve city facilities or expand services, which is a good position to be in. Obviously, with the numbers I just went over, we've been struggling to expand and enhance facilities, but we are having a number of organizations and individuals come forward seeking partnerships with the city to improve some of our facilities or services. So that's going to be a major focus of the coming year's budget. This isn't a goal for the general fund, but the general fund is on course or a trajectory to be debt-free in six years. So what that means is, obviously, as we talk about financing options for inspiring spaces, you have a lot of capacity in terms of debt service in, in the general fund. Obviously, servicing that debt, coming up with the revenue of funds to service the debt is another issue, but obviously, we're not anywhere near our legal debt in the, in the general fund, so that's, that's good news. Water and sewer fund, as we just went over, is on solid financial footing, we feel good about that, that's good news. Airport, whereas they're not, you know, producing tremendous amount of excess revenue, they are, I would call them self-supporting. So through the course of this year, they, we've done well at the airport, we're paying bills, so that's where we need to be. So those are the positives. Some of the challenges, and there's probably not a close second at this point, the state of North Carolina is undertaking tax reform. Their goal is to broaden, is to lower the income tax by moving more towards consumption-based taxes, i.e. the sales tax, and broaden the base. Services that aren't paying sales tax now, or they're planning will be, some services will be paying taxes. So they want to lower the income rate, broaden the sales tax base, and we're very concerned about some of the things that are being talked about. There's a bill that's been introduced to basically outlaw the ability of cities to levy privilege license in their jurisdiction. Privilege license for the City of Hickory equates to $1.1 million, and this is all part of their overall tax reform initiative. Additionally, we have something called our utility franchise taxes, which are taxes on electricity and natural gas and telecommunications services. That equates to about $3.2 million. They're also talking about scrapping that. Now, one of the things that they've said is they want to hold cities and counties harmless. We've heard that before. Hopefully, they're going to have to broaden the base a long way to, to hold folks harmless. So that's something that we're really focused on right now. We don't know how that's going to shake out. During the course of this year, things will become a lot clearer. Apparently, they are going, they're doing a city-by-city or jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction analysis on what the impact of the proposed legislation would be. So, based on what they're saying, we will have a good idea of what this is going to do to us. And again, they have, particularly on the Senate side, they have, there's a commitment to hold cities and counties harmless in terms of being revenue-neutral. And we don't want it to be revenue-neutral in the aggregate, we want it to be revenue-neutral for us. So that's, that's our...
They're talking aggregate.
Well, they're also going to do the city...
We're talking, we're talking.
Yes.
And I, and I'd like to just add that they're not doing a, like, privilege license, for instance. I think that their proposal would still have some privilege license, it would just go to the state instead of the city.
They, they would have limited, we would no longer collect revenue...
Yes, but people still pay that, those taxes.
To the state.
To the state?
Correct.
I was going to make sure of the balance. What an impression that has. They were getting the last tax.
Yes, that's a good point. They will still collect, and I think they are going to revamp it overall, but there will still be a state levy privilege license tax, but locals will not be able to do that.
They're going...
The sales tax would expand to services, is that true?
Yes, and they have a list, I think it's expanding it to 32 different services that are taxed now, it is.
Okay, and so, is that supposed to make up for all of, that's supposed to make up, even though here, our sales tax, our consumption is down?
Right.
Folks, that doesn't look very good to me. I don't know. I mean, what happens in the interim file there tinkering a little?
Well, everything stays the same for now, until they roll up the legislation, and it's an option.
And I think you're talking about 2007, same.
They all, they all...
I think 14, 15, kind of a phase in, in terms of the bill that's specifically in the privilege license run. I haven't seen any other bills yet, they keep talking about a whole package moving coming, so it's going to be a series of bills. But if they keep with that pattern of what they've done with privilege license, it'll be a phase-in process over several years, which that doesn't make sense. What Warren's saying is 32 new professions or entities that will now be charging sales tax on services like realtors, dentists, craters, oil sign companies.
But, but, you know, consumption's down anyway.
You could expand if you wanted to, but if the people in North Carolina are not consuming and sales tax is not going to go up, that'd be questionable, there about cities not being still aware of.
Well, that, that's why this is our number one, either unknown or challenge, or whatever you want to call it. We do not, we don't have a good feeling about this, but we're, we're keeping an eye on it. And most of the activities so far seem to be on the Senate side. So, but they have, they have at least given lip service to holding jurisdictions harmless.
Which isn't like they're going to, they have this end goal, where you just have to get where they think we ought to be. I'm not sure about that.
The lower income tax, broaden the base, hold local governments harmless, that's the plan.
Well, the goal is eliminate the income tax.
Ultimately, they're not, they, I don't even think they've put a plan forward that would do that at this point, that, you know, overclimb until it ever...
That's the ultimate goal.
Yeah. And then more immediate, speaking of hold harmless, we have, we currently have something called a hold harmless revenue that we get from the state, and it is supposed, this was supposed to be the last year, there's a move to try to get them to expand that. This goes back to revenues that were taken years ago, and we would be held harmless for a few years. So that's, that's something that we'll have to do. Hopefully, we will get an extension on that, we will see. So there's a lot of uncertainty right now regarding what the state of North Carolina is undertaking. Property tax revenue, that's a challenge, continues to be, even though we saw an incremental increase, or we should see one this coming year, it's still, the revenue is still below '07, '08 levels. Same for sales tax, by the way. Our safer grant, which is the grant that added the latter company in the fire department, this was the last year that we'd get any revenue for that, because that has been incrementally declining. And now the full $500,000 impact of that, of adding staff, will be the city's responsibility this coming year. Just your, you know, cost pressures that we always feel, things like energy, maintenance issues, street, street resurfacing is something, if not this coming year, the next year, that we're going to have to put more money into, we recognize that. So those were, those were some of the, one more. Any new facilities or new services are going to require new revenue, except, you know, we're talking about partnerships, which is a great way of going about this now. So it's not just, the formula's a little bit more complicated than that now, so, you know, new facilities, new services are going to require new revenues, or some partnerships with folks in the community, financial partnerships. So those are some of the challenges that we're, we're seeing related to developing the upcoming year's budget. And with that, I'll be right back. Any questions?
I don't know if it'll work out fiscal year beginning in '13, but I hope, and I know, I think the conversation we are, with GDS now able to accept single-stream recycling, I hope that's something the city can, if it needs to start planning for it this year '13, that can, that, we can get that...
We're, we're having those conversations now.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Any appointments? Situations, requests? Matters not on the agenda? General comment? Motion to go into closed session?
I'm going to go closed session.
We will go, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We're going to go into closed session for the reasons described in the agenda. At the conclusion, we will come back and move action or adjourned meeting. Thank you all for being here.